Well, good evening. Thank you for coming to the St. Lucie County School Board Regular Meeting Tuesday, May the 9th, 5 o'clock. Thank you for coming. Let's go ahead and please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Kids at Hope/Treasure Hope Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Treasure Hunter's Pledge. As an adult treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Alrighty, please be seated. Board members, let's go ahead and join the audience. We have The Beauty and the Beast from Rivers Edge Elementary. They're gonna...oh, yes. Under the direction of Ms. Amy Martin-Kovick. And they're going to be performing Thursday night and Friday night on US1 at the Savannah Club at 7 o'clock. Good deal. Go ahead. Thank you, Rivers Edge. Give it up for Rivers Edge. Thank you so much. Principal Kerry Wellack-Covitz. And parents, if you could, please stand so that you're recognized. That's a lot of effort to come out here. Please stand, parents. Thank you so much. Boys and girls, we'll see you this weekend, Thursday and Friday night, 7 o'clock at Savannah's Club on US1. Board members, if we could just stay down here on the floor? We'll just do special orders of business on the floor. If you have an uns...if you'd like to be an unscheduled speaker at the end of our meeting, please turn it in to the Recording Secretary, Chris Harrison. That'd be much appreciated before we get to the consented agenda.
Mr. Chairman, Board Member Superintendent Gent, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Bill Tomlinson, who will bring forward some information from the Jessica Clinton Foundation in regard to some wonderful donations in regard to the AED units for our district.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. and Mrs. Ray Lelou are here tonight to donate an automatic external defibrillator to one of our schools. Mr. and Mrs. Lelou are not strangers to this board. They've been here many times to make this same donation, and we are very, very grateful for the work that they continue to do on this project. Mrs. Lelou founded the Jessica Clinton Foundation and has spent a great deal of time organizing fundraiser fundraisers and events to benefit the foundation. This year, in cooperation with the local Panera Bread Restaurants, they assisted in a fundraiser in these efforts for the foundation by selling heart-shaped cookies during the month of February. This year, the foundation used its Facebook page to have money or to raise money for this contest. We are very grateful and very...for this very wonderful and kind and generous donation from the Lelou family and the Jessica Clinton Foundation. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. and Mrs. Ray Lelou.
Good evening. We've actually...each year, we do this fundraiser through Panera Bread, and the proceeds from that we generally use for purchasing AEDs and some donated to the school and other areas. And then, we also do a annual heart screening, where we screen about 250 to 300 kids each year. This year, one of the AEDs that we are donating, we created a competition on our Facebook page through different schools, and they had the opportunity to win...the students had an opportunity to win for the school an AED. This year, one of the winners was...I'm sorry, my wife knows that part better. Point?
Palm Point.
Palm Point. Also, there was a local...
Renaissance.
Renaissance Charter School in Traditions also won an AED. So, we're here to donate that today, and...
Do we have members from Palm Point here tonight? Anyone here that could accept the... In Renaissance at Tradition, the Charter School was unable to be here tonight to accept their donation.
The board will now recognize members of St. Lucie Public Schools staff and others who supported autism awareness. Bill Tomlinson will now bring that recognition forward.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Gent, as you well know, every month in April, we celebrate autism awareness. In March of 2014, the most recent numbers came out about the prevalence of autism in our society, and about one in every 68 children are being identified with autism. So, the importance of recognizing and making the community aware of autism is paramount to the work that we do at this point in time. This year, we were able to work with some of our community organizations, such as the St. Lucie Firefighters Association, and they put on a spectacular event at the Jessica Clinton Park in Port St. Lucie. They also worked with the different police departments to outfit the individual police cars and fire trucks with the insignia for autism to support this event. Mr. Pete Villasousa from the St. Lucie Firefighters Division was the person who was instrumental in working with us and collaborating on this event, and I don't think Mr. Villasousa was able to make it tonight. But we do want to recognize him and make sure that we do honor the work that he did, as well as Stacy Carter from the Fire Department, who worked with our schools to bring fire trucks on campus to actually promote fire safety, and as well as Brian Rebe, who worked to organize flag football tournaments the day of the autism awareness. All of the funds that were generated that day go to the Center for Autism and Related Disorders, and they will be designated to be spent here on the Treasure Coast for our families and students. I would also like to recognize Valentina White, Jessica McLaughlin, Cheryl Petrino, Kimberly Willis, and Marcy Wong, who are individuals who work tirelessly every year to promote this autism awareness event for our school system and our community. And finally, I would also like to recognize Mr. Edward Madrid from the Walmart Distribution Center. He is the Operations Manager, and he has continued to work to support us by organizing volunteer events with the workers at Walmart, and this year, they donated $2,000 to our autism program based on the volunteer hours that they were able to come up with. So, if I could ask these individuals to please come forward so that we could present them with the plaque and also to have their pictures made. Thank you.
For the next presentation, I would like to call up to the podium to present with me no stranger to education, Dr. Samuel S. Gaines. Dr. Gaines is with me at the podium because we are getting ready to recognize nine honored students with certificates and cash awards for being the winners of the 2017 Dr. Samuel S. Gaines Essay Contest. This is the ninth annual Samuel Gaines Essay Contest, and this contest is sponsored by Proctor Construction Company. It provides these cash prizes for the winning entries and is part of the district's recognition and celebration of African-American history. Therefore, at this time, we invite Brandon Noble, who represents Proctor Construction, to come forward to accept a plaque as a token of appreciation from the district and also to remain with the board and the superintendent as students come forward to accept their awards. Brandon, we do appreciate you and your company for what you have done. Local students in grades three through 12 may write an essay describing a person of African-American descent in St. Lucie County who has made a difference in the student's life, explaining what a person did to make such an impact. This contest is named after Dr. Gaines, who served on St. Lucie County School Board for 34 years, five times as the chairman. At Dr. Gaines's retirement in 2006, Superintendent Michael Lannon instituted this essay contest in honor of Samuel Gaines's legacy. So, at this time, we would start with our high school winners. First place in the high school division, from Fort Pierce Westwood High School, Cyan Neston, who has a $150 cash prize. Please come forward. Second place, from Port St. Lucie High School. This young lady is currently in Tallahassee with the History Fair Contest, and from what I understand, she is one of the top finishers in the state. On her behalf, we are honored, in place of Angel Voe, to have her grandmother, Myan Doan, here to accept award on her behalf. Thank you so much. She is receiving her certificate along with a $100 cash prize. And third place, from Fort Pierce Central High School, with a $75 cash prize and a certificate for his outstanding authorship, we have Terry McQueen. The middle school division, and the same cash prizes for first, second, and third prize, we have Joanne Neston, 8th grade, from Dan McCarty Middle School. Second place, from Lincoln Park Academy, we have Deborah Reese, 8th grade student. And third place, a 6th grade student from Palm Point Elementary, Dominique Thomas. From our elementary school, Palm Point Elementary, 5th grade student Nathan Oliver Hamilton. From Sam Gaines Academy, 4th grade student Jocelyn Garcia. And third place, 5th grade student from Palm Point Elementary, Tyler Reed. And while we stage for the picture for all of our moms, dads, and fans of these young authors, if you could please stand up, we appreciate you too as well. We know there was some editing and proofreading, and it takes a team, so thank you so much. And as we move on to the star awards for the evening, this is the portion where we recognize members of our team for outstanding service. This award comes to us from one of our parents, who wrote a letter about some exceptional attention and service shown to her child from two of our team members, two of our school resource officers, Deputy Reynolds, who serves St. Lucie West K-8, and Deputy Archie, who serves Oak Hammock. She wrote to us stating that these two fine officers, positive actions have been shared, and that they have reached out to support her as she adopted a child from foster care. Her child was demonstrating some negative behaviors, and in her inquiry for support, Deputy Britt Reynolds offered positive solutions that began with contact to Deputy Archie at Oak Hammock, where her child is a student. Deputy Archie met with the child, and according to mom, her child has worked super hard to make good decisions ever since that meeting. Deputy Archie gave her a little badge, and she wears that badge every day, and she tells her mom that she plans on making good decisions every day as a result of the discussions that she's had with Deputy Archie. In addition, mom has shared that Deputy Reynolds and Deputy Archie follow up with her and continue to check with her on how her child is doing. She said that these two deputies didn't have to take time out or really do anything. She says that "I reached out to them out of desperation and wanting to do the best for my child. Without a second thought, they immediately responded to my needs and addressed my child in a very positive manner." I am so grateful that there are people like these two deputies that see to the importance and that are willing to make a difference. This experience may change my child's life because of the encouragement and because of the positive reinforcement that she's received. As a mother, this is priceless, and there is not enough money in the world that could repay them for the help. I just want to say thank you and let them know that I am truly grateful for all of their help. So, we thank you too for the partnership that you show us to our district every day. You are our shining stars.
Alrighty, thank you so much. If we could, can we have a CTA report? Take your time, take your time.
Hi there. How are y'all? So, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We're in the home stretch of the school year, and things are busy for everyone, I know. My hope is that we finish the year as strongly as we started, and that we keep sight of the importance of retaining good people to do the work of the district going forward. Speaking of good people, I do want to say a few words...I know you're ready for this. Say a few words about a meeting last night that you may have heard about. And after this, I'm going to be done with it, just so you know. But here's the thing. The general public needs to understand, and they're elected officials as well, that St. Lucie Public Schools are not a collection of buildings, and the school district is not a thing in and of itself. The school district is the people who work within it, the people that I represent, the people that work for you. It's really the people. And the work we do is hard work. With fewer resources, less support, more political micromanagement than any other entity in this state, and certainly any other entity in this county. We are thrown around like a partially deflated football and expected to be all-stars. And what's pretty amazing is that this county and the people who work in it rise to the occasion every single time. And whether school grades reflect that or not, I don't believe school grades reflect excellence, quite honestly, because I know there are amazing schools and amazing teachers in this district that work at schools that are Cs. That's the way the system is set up. It's not set up for the real excellence to rise, but that's another whole conversation. So, when others who think that just because they have been to school themselves at some point are experts in teaching or even running a school district, and they jump in with so-called support, it's hard not to be a little testy. And I'll be honest, my members are a little testy about what's been going on the last couple of weeks. And really, it didn't start with an article in the newspaper. It started with a meeting that took place in December, and it's continued since then. So, maybe we need to just model what we want them to do, because I don't think they get it. As a matter of fact, I don't not think...I just think...I know they don't get it. Here's what real support would look like from government entities in this community. How about release time once a month for their employees to volunteer somewhere in the county, in the school district, as part of their...as part of their workday? How about partnering with the school district to identify sources of affordable housing so that young teachers and their families looking to make an investment in the community can rent to own a home here and actually stay here and have a commitment to be here? How about helping the district promote the wonderful successes of our school system instead of continually focusing on areas in need of improvement and kind of saying, "If I was on the board, I could do it better"? Well, if you want to be on the school board, then run for the school board. If you're a city councilman, be a city councilman. If you're a county commissioner, be a county commissioner. I'm a teacher, so let me just be a teacher. When it comes to good schools, I've always believed it was a community responsibility, parents, local government, and the school system. We all have to work together. We can't function in isolation. We never have in this county, and we never will. Now, there can be a rewrite of the truth. You can call it alternative facts, you can call it fake news, you can call it whatever you want to call it. Those of us have been...that have been here for the long haul know that there has been cooperation between all three counties, the government entities in this community for many, many years, and it didn't start in 2002. There is not one entity in this county that doesn't want to see every child who is born here or who grows up here be successful and even come back to live in our community. But for any local government to think it has the right or responsibility to tell another local government entity and their employees through ultimatum, proclamation, citizens committee, or whatever, how to do its work, they're simply grossly out of line. So, where do we go from here? I'm going to kind of leave that up to you. Because, see, I know to stay in my lane, and my lane is to advocate for the people who work for you. And sometimes I tell you you're right, and sometimes I tell you you're wrong. That's what you can always count on from me. I'm not going to tell you, well, not always, how to do the job. I may give some suggestions, but I always want to be a part of the solution, and I want our city commis...county...our city government... And I want our city commission, county, our city government and county government to be a part of the solution as well. I can't get any one individual to rethink their behavior, because behavior is behavior, and you can't change who somebody is. But I am going to say it one last time, stay in your lane. Let the school district run the school district. We know what we're doing. And if you're a city commissioner, a city councilman, county commissioner, take care of my roads, give me clean water, pick up my trash on time, cut the grass at the park, lower my taxes. And quite honestly, stop being the voice that continues to tell the community, "We're not doing good enough. We are working really hard." And stop telling us that you're telling everyone you're being supportive, when everywhere you go, you come up with some way to say something else, out of this side of your mouth, that side of your mouth, and I don't know where else it's going to come from. As I said, I'm leaving it up to you at this point. I have faith in our school board to do the right thing, and to partner, and to understand what your role is, and I can only hope that our city council and county commission will
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. CWA report? Thank you, no report from CWA. Let's turn to consent agenda. Adoption of consent agenda, 6.1, can I get a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Hensley, second by Dr. Mills, any discussion? See, none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five, zero. Mr. Superintendent, can I get your recommendation?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Motion by Dr. Mills, second by Ms. Hawley, any discussion? See, none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five, zero. As we're moving on to the next part of our, that was a big sheet today. Mr. Superintendent, can I have your comments, reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's agenda that was just approved, we have some, some new folks in some different positions, and I would like to recognize them at this time and ask them to come up and say a couple of words, a few words, brief words, to our school board. For the position of Executive Director of School, coming to us is Ms. Latricia Woolert. Ms. Woolert, would you come up?[783.13][783.13][applause]
I'm going to be super brief. Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Vice Chairman Mills, and Mr. Gent. I am sincerely humbled to have been selected as the new Executive Director of St. Lucy County Schools. I've had the pleasure of working in the district for over 20 years, where I've developed and grown in various capacities under many great leaders. I count it a blessing and an honor to further my career in the capacity as Executive Director, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity.[830.73][830.73][applause]
I see your, I believe I see your father over there, and other family members, wave. Mr. Thornton was a member of the school district here, we worked together at Central, and was a principal in our district, and is now retired, looking, looking calm. For the position of Director of Accountability and Assessment, I'd like to recognize Mr. Daryl Canemas. Daryl is coming to us from Orange County.
Thank you. I was told I had 20 minutes, but after the "keep it brief" comment, I'll shorten it a whole bunch. First of all, school board members, I'm very, very grateful and thankful for this opportunity. I know it's a big job, and I'm looking forward to it, and I'll tell you what I've told everybody I've ever worked for, I will not let you down, and I won't disappoint you. Superintendent Gent, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I also want to thank Dr. Prince for talking to me about this and recommending me for this position, and I'm very grateful for everything, and I look forward to working with all of you. So, thank you.[908.82][908.82][applause]
And for the Director of ESE, from Floresta Elementary, Ms. Donna Gill.[918.23][918.23][applause]
Good evening, Chairman Ingersoll, Superintendent Gent. This will be brief, I'm kind of in a whirlwind. I got the phone call yesterday, I was in my second hour of driving back from Tallahassee on the road yesterday when I got offered the position. Two years ago, I accepted the position at Floresta, and I thanked everybody that was supportive of me through the 17 years I've been in the district, and to them, I am still grateful. But I would like to thank a few other people tonight, Ms. Lydia Martin, who has been supportive of me this year, and also my Assistant Principal, Ms. Kane, who, coming in as a veteran AP, really made my job at Floresta a lot easier than probably some new principals have had in the past. So I look forward to the opportunity to coming into the ESE department again and working with Mr. Tomlinson and the rest of the district office people here. Thank you for the opportunity.[980.01][980.01][applause]
Couple of, couple of other comments. First off, last week, we celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, had the opportunity to send out to all of our teachers an email, and we just want to, that's our core, that's our foundation, our school centers, and it's a very, very difficult and challenging job that they do, and they're our unsung heroes. I'll have some comments for them in a moment on an Ed Ott piece that I wrote that I want to read to the board, but I want to congratulate our teachers. This is graduation season, Indian River State College had their graduation on Saturday, we will begin our graduations in two weeks. We just want to remind, remind our public that it's going to be a little different this year, we will have Centrals and Treasure Coasts' graduation out at the fairgrounds, and then we will have the other four schools, Lincoln Park, Port St. Lucie, Centennial, and who am I leaving out? Westwood, over at, at the Fenn Center. So the going to the Fenn Center will be different for us, and it's important that folks try to arrive no later than 45 minutes before time, because it's going to be packed, there's going to be a lot of traffic. We have our law enforcement gentleman here right now, it's going to be one-way traffic heading east only to get into the fairgrounds, they'll be parking there. We want to get folks into the, not into fairgrounds, I mean into the Fenn Center. Everyone must have a ticket to get in, so if you come and you've got two tickets, and you've got a family of five with two tickets, somebody's going to be hanging outside, and so we want to make sure that we have no issues at the gate, and that everyone has the ticket. If you have, if you have any problems or challenges, you need to work with the school principal of each respective school. The ceremonies themselves will be broadcast live on the Ed channel, on our education channel, as well as being streamed live on YouTube, and we're going to ask folks not to bring signs in, no balloons. We really want to make sure that this is a dignified ceremony, it's a time of celebration, but it's also a time of dignity. It's kind of like a wedding, you want to have a, a great ceremony and a great celebration after the graduation, and continue to just look at our webpage for further updates, and we're looking forward to a good time. 1972, there was a movie called The Poseidon Adventure, I don't know if anybody remembers that, and there was a song called, the main song in there was called "There's Got to Be a Morning After." And today's the morning after the state budget, and it's not a good, the ship sank and joined the Titanic at the bottom of the ocean. The budget is no exception, and we're very disappointed in what occurred in Tallahassee. And just want to share some information with our board and with our general public. The vote went through yesterday, there was a, a bill, an education bill that passed in the Senate 2018. Senator David Simmons, who was the chairman of the Senate Pre-K Appropriations Committee, voted against it, and the reason he voted against it, his quote was, "For those who believe there's good enough in here that we can clean it up later, then vote for this, or if you think that we as a society say yes too many times, then say no. If you're sick of saying yes to everything, then vote no." That was a very, very courageous position for the, for the senator to make. There were three other Republican senators that voted against it, along with the Democratic Coalition. And I sent him an email today, thanking him and congratulating him for, for voting and taking the stand that he did. This will now go to the governor. Our governor released a statement today, last night he called it "The Secret Budget", because this was particularly in education, there were over 300 pages that were added since probably last Thursday and Friday. So when we talk about transparency in government, and folks being transparent, at the last minute, there were backroom deals made and things that were made, and pretty much the House priorities carried over into education. So it had an effect on us of over $420 million. It's really a disaster for public schools in the state of Florida, we'll be struggling. We're going to have to make some difficult decisions this year. They have touched pretty much everything that they can touch. The governor has an opportunity to veto this, I just want to read a quote from the governor, because the governor's initial proposed budget was a 3% increase, and the Senate themselves was at about 2% increase, and what's required, a thing called the required local effort, that would have been included in the budget to help pay for the expenses that we have, but those things were taken out. The governor says, and I quote, "Last night, the Florida Legislature passed a budget that was done largely behind closed doors. It was done without important input from the public, and many members of the legislature who were elected by Floridians to serve them. That's unfortunate. I ran for governor to fight career politicians. It's a backroom deals like this that make families think politics is nothing more than a game. I am beginning to review the budget, I have the option of vetoing the entire budget or vetoing the items that circumvented the transparent process and do not have an acceptable return on investment for hard-working taxpayers." So he's going to look at this line by line, which he has the ability to do, we're going to try to get some kind of call to action as well, to notify our governor on what we're upset with, and, and I speak for the school board, I speak for the Florida School Boards Association, I speak for the Superintendents Association, I think I speak for the collecting bargaining groups that are out there, the CTA, CWA, and, and hopefully for countless students, boys and girls, and parents that are there, that this budget is unacceptable for public schools, and it's going to hurt us. One of the things that's added, and I'll just keep going for a few more minutes, 20 minutes of resource, recess was included in the budget, but there's no additional dollars to pay for that 20 minutes of recess. So we will have to squeeze out, and recess is a good thing, not a bad thing, and letting our boys and girls be able to run and exercise and to blow off some steam, we want to have that for the teachers as well. It's not a bad thing, but it's 20 minutes into the day, so where do we take 20 minutes out of? We take it out of academic time, unless they want it to add 20 minutes until the end of the day, and then adequately fund that. So for public schools, the 20-minute recess is in there, it's not for charter schools, it's only for, for public schools. And so sometimes we talk about dual, dual school systems that are there, that would be a perfect example of that. We were hoping that we would get relief from testing, the only relief we really got was there's an opportunity to go to some paper and pencil testing for younger ages, and Algebra II was eliminated from the, the testing schedule, but we thought that that would be much more significant than it is. Schools of Hope were brought in, and this is for charter schools to come in and try to turn around, schools that are turning around with about 200, 200-some-odd million dollars for that, and I'll read some comments in a moment about that, we can do that better than anyone. These turnaround charter schools that come from other, from other states, come in and they take one grade at a time, and it will be interesting to see, because many of them said they will not come to the state of Florida, because the expectation is you would take over an entire school, where their formula for success, and it's not a bad formula, is you take one grade at a time and add that on. We don't have that luxury, nor that resources, nor do we have the financial ability to do that. The title dollars, the Title I, which is so significant to our district, every school but one is a title school, and this, and, and economics and poverty pay, have a, have a major impact on, in educating our students, has been affected. They're trying to really take out some collective bargaining processes through effective bonuses for our teachers, of a $1,200 bonus for highly effective teachers, and 800 for effective teachers, with the caveat, and I'm sure that Ms. Rodriguez has read that, if the money is there, okay? And so we'll have to see where that goes. So it's been very disappointing, to say the least. Just to give you some additional information, I don't talk very often at these meetings, but I, this is really important to us. Where we were 10 years ago in a recession, it was natural that you had to do some major cuts. We're not in a recession right now. The dollars are there, the governor has said that, different legislators have said that the dollars were there. Supplemental academic instruction, what we call SII, that goes for reading and literacy programs, is 52, I'm sorry, it's $62 million less than 10 years ago. ESE in our state is $50 million less than 10 years ago, with over a half a million young men, young women, boys and girls with disabilities. Safe schools allocation is $11 million less than 10 years ago. Transportation, 45 million less than 10 years ago. Instructional materials, $36 million less for our students than 10 years ago. This budget fails to support and serve the basic needs of our classrooms and our teachers, and so we're going to appeal to the governor to veto this, and hopefully come back with a better option, and legislators can come back in. If the board will, let me read this, it'll take me a couple of minutes, but I would like to state this as well. This is a TC Palm Ed Ott piece that hopefully will be published in the next couple of days, it's entitled, "St. Lucy Public Schools: A Winning Mindset. In each of our public schools, the Statue of Liberty replica serves as a constant reminder that public schools were created to strengthen democracy, and our public schools remain the main channel through which our country makes good on its fundamental promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. As such, St. Lucy Public Schools' commitment first and foremost is to ensure that all of our students have equal access to a high-quality and rigorous education and graduate college and/or career-ready as informed, engaged citizens. Every child who walks onto any of our campuses deserves the same opportunities to learn and experience success despite the burdens placed upon our educators by misguided political reforms and policies from special interest groups or from those who seek to make a profit off our children. Our dedicated team of teachers, administrators, support staff forge forward with a vengeance to figure out where links need to be soldered, fences mended, and bridges built in order to support our students so that they may accomplish their goals and dreams. When their goals and dreams become a reality, our communities are strengthened, our nation is bonded, and our democracy is fortified. I talk about our graduation rate in there, so I won't go into that, where we went from 45th to 13th. The gauge is moving in the right direction for early literacy as well, in a year where state trends in reading scores remain somewhat lackluster, our students showed growth. Clearly, clearly, this is a priority area for our progress, and the outpouring of community support is most welcome in our efforts to engage our young readers and establish literacy-rich environments. And while it is a fact that a child's socioeconomic status can create unique obstacles affecting reading proficiency and vocabulary development, we're not standing behind them as excuses. On the contrary, we're tackling them head-on. Politicians and policymakers cannot fix these challenges. St. Lucy Public School educators are in the midst of a cultural shift, altering long-held assumptions, beliefs, expectations, and approaches to learning. I'll skip through some of these things. It's also important in determining viable and marketable career choices is to close, is the close relationship that we have with the Economic Development Council, Career Source, and Community-Based Organizations. Positive partnerships such as these have led to active participation in the Skills Gap Study, which addresses the workforce needs of our community, important information to inform program decisions for our CTE programs. And how are we doing engaging our students in CTE? 97% of the students in CTE graduate from high school. 51% of our students in high school are exposed to at least one of these classes of the 62 that are offered. Industry certifications this past year increased by 61% in St. Lucy County. This means our students are graduating prepared with industry credentials, ready to enter the work, the world of work with skills aligned to predict, to, that are aligned in predicted areas of major economic growth. As a community, we all want best for our children. Our teachers model that expectation. To each of them, I say thank you, this board says thank you. Research shows that our teachers are more passionate and mission-driven than those in other professions. They teach because they want to make a difference in the world, one child at a time. A child's first and best teacher should be their parent. Unfortunately, that is not the case for far too many of our children. Educators are not only asked to teach children, but to raise many of them as well. Teachers don't seek fame and recognition, but they're driven by a moral purpose. They come to work every day, prepared and determined to make a difference. That difference will not come about by policymakers mandating change. Change will only happen through local will and capacity. There must be an end to the culture of blame, we must have accountability, a community culture that values risk-taking, recognition, and shared accountability. Through our work together, we need to identify key challenges, verify them with data, and unite to explore strategies that lead to a remedy that we all can support. St. Lucy Public Schools' business is, as usual, is not acceptable. We're in the business of continuous improvement, therefore, I'm looking forward to what tomorrow holds in store, because I know our best days are ahead of us. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
That was a whole year's worth, thank you for sharing all that.[1765.15][1765.15][laughter] Board members, report, Dr. Hensley. Oh, I'm sorry, attorney report. I didn't mean to overlook you down there.
Well, let me tag on to the superintendent. You probably know, and the community needs to know, that we work up until voting time on Monday to try to encourage the vote to be different. Received this, I will share this with you, this came to me Friday night from Eva Rodriguez from Miami-Dade, is a synopsis of the- It's a synopsis of the about 300 pages, which is more than 20 bills they rolled into one. Some did not even get through committee, so it goes against their own rules. I'm really disappointed that the senate seemed to cave significantly and accept the House, basically, the House recommendation in total. It does not serve our students well. It does not serve our state well. And in the Constitution, which may change in '18, because there's a Constitutional Revision Commission, but right now, in the Constitution, the only paramount obligation of the state of Florida is the education of its children. That is the only paramount obligation in the Constitution. And charter schools seem to be set aside to create a bifurcated system. We've been through that in this community. We overcame it, and we're not going back. Charter schools are in the Constitution as public schools. So when the legislators in Tallahassee talk about them as if they are not, and treat them separately, they are actually doing something that is against the intent of the Constitution. So we've been advocating for a long time. We've had all kinds of meetings. We've had all kinds of opportunities, give our input, and so far, to no avail. So our next step is the governor. And we will have to make sure that we let him know why we think this needs to be vetoed. It's something that people that we talked to have been up there for 35 years as lobbyists or as part of the professional team up there have never seen anything like this. Never seen so much closed-door discussion. Never seen so many things that nobody knew was in it. So my query of several of our elected officials is, have you read all those pages? Do you know what's in there? And they basically did not. A few did, most did not. So it is a very disconcerting week, to put it mildly. However, on a good note, next week, Children's Services Council will have its Youth of the Year Program and its Champion for Children, because in this community, we have fabulous kids, and we have many people who are truly champions for our children.
Ms...
Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I'm upset. There's a movie called Courage Under Fire. Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for having courage. Thank you for representing a good portion of our employees. I appreciate that, because it does take courage, and you're right. I mean, it's shameful, the behavior that I, and the things that I have heard said, and it's offensive to me personally. St. Lucie County School Board lost a lawsuit with Renaissance at Tradition when we asked for students to be bused. It was found, and appealed, and the judges said, "It's legal." I grew up in St. Lucie County. This is insidious segregation. That is my personal opinion. That is not the opinion of the court system, but we fought the good fight, because all students should be exposed to the education in charters as well as public schools. Well, excuse me, charters are public schools, but it depends what day of the week or who you ask, because our legislators are also confused that charter schools are public schools. So now we have students that cannot be bused to this school, and we fought it. And I want you to know, we fought it, and I personally am very angry, because we didn't do this to gain anything for ourselves as board members. We did this about the kids. We have to step back and think about the kids. And if you don't think this is insidious segregation, it is, and it's coming, and you have to have courage under fire. All of us have to be armed and ready to fight for the kids, all the kids, because what happens in this county will go into other counties. If other schools see, "Well, they're not busing," well, we're gonna stop busing too, and we have no recourse, because we don't have people that listen to us in Tallahassee. So think long and hard, when some of our people come up to be elected again, at the state level, think long and hard, and get out there, and talk to your friends, and talk to your neighbors. What was politically correct is no longer politically correct, and we have to take back our public schools that are the foundation of democracy, because as the public schools go, so does democracy. And Phil Shalekdi, the guru, said that 20 years ago, "Watch as your public schools go, so will your democracy." This is serious business, and in St. Lucie County, we don't play that game. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hilson, Ms. Hawley. Before Dr. Mills goes, I want to say my first sentence is, Dr. Mills has a speaker bureau, and she did a great job at Westwood. I want to thank Mr. John Lynch and Principal, interprinciple Joe Lizzo for hosting it, and it was just a great event. And Dr. Mills, I really want to thank you for your efforts in putting that all together and inviting us to come. Dr. Mills, you have any comments?
My comment, my first comment is to respond to what has already been said across the board, with superintendent, the situation that we're dealing with, with our budget, state budget, and our governor, and I just want to encourage everyone, we need you now as public schools, as this district, we encourage you to request the governor to veto this budget that they have come up with and how it has been done. So please follow up with this, talk to your friends, talk to your family. Most of the times, the only way to make people do right is to put the pressure on them to do right. And if they don't have that pressure, they can do whatever they want to do, and walk away, and everything will be just fine, and we'll be in a mess. So I encourage you to go out and make that phone call, and send that email. And we need to do an influx of getting the governor's attention right now. We went to Tallahassee. We advocated for this public school education, and for our own local district, and we have to continue to do just that. Again, I also want to mention a thank you to the union, not just Ms. Vicki, because we had, the place was packed last night at the city of Port St. Lucie Council meeting, packed with our teachers, who were saying, "Don't say anything you want to say, and don't treat us any way you want to treat us." We work hard, we are, the entire district, we know how much effort we put into our children's education, and we will continue to put that effort. We will continue to move forward. As a local community, we are going to make this happen. But we do need the governor and Tallahassee to understand that funds are important to measure up to what they're asking us to measure up to do. So we definitely request that we, as a community, get behind this, because if we don't do anything, then people are allowed to do anything. And so I will be making my call as well. Thank you, Mr. Ingasol. The speakers bureau at Westwood went very well. Thank you, board, to each and every one of you for being so supportive and making this happen. Please don't say Dr. Mills' thing, because it's our, it's our thing, and all of us are doing our part to help this happen. We did have a number of 56 participants, and mostly men in our community, that showed up for our appreciation breakfast. And thank you so much, Westwood. Where's Mr. Lynch and Mr. Lazo? Thank you so much. You did a fantastic job in representing your school, and we also were able to have a tour as well. I'm not going to say much more about it, because we have one young man that's here tonight as one of our scheduled speakers that's going to share his experience and what took place at our Westwood High School. We are so proud of what you guys are doing there. I have heard parents come to me and say, "There has been a tremendous change at Westwood," and so the whole community is excited about what you are doing there, so please keep up the good work. We had an opportunity to see your vet program there, and your CNA, which is the Certified Nursing Assistant, and also your agricultural program there. You're doing a fantastic job. We also had a time where we were able to go to the Family Reading Festival that took place on the 29th at Tradition Field. I believe it's our eighth annual Family Reading Festival, that I absolutely enjoy being a part of, because we give back, as a school district, as a school community, back to the community, to families, to the children, and there's so many people that this thing has grown just phenomenally. So next year, you may want to go and experience it. We give back in the way of reading literacy and giving out books. I mean, we just give out thousands of books. You just can pick up, you know, books and take home to parents, so it's a good time for our community, and I encourage you, in the ninth annual Reading Festival, that you go out and see what that's all about. Also had the privilege on May 5th, Lincoln Park Academy's Golden Commencement Reunion Class of 1967. We want to thank Lincoln Park for their hosting of that event every single year, and how well that went. It is a real experience. It's really a history lesson each year. And those that can attend in the community, in our, within our district, go check it out, because every year, there's a different class, and it's the history of Lincoln Park, and why that school holds what it holds. It comes back through history. So that was an enjoyable event. And May 5th, also, they had the Daddy's Play. How many of you have seen the Daddy's Play about teen human trafficking? They have our own teenagers within our district that are doing that play, and it's a walkthrough. I don't know if it's still open and they're redoing it, but I saw many of our children in this district, high school students, who were a part of that play, and they did a tremendous job, and gave a lot of knowledge behind that situation that's very challenging within our state with our children, especially those that run away, and what they face out there. So we can all kind of be on the lookout to keep children from being taken and used as human trafficking. Our Education Foundation Night will be this Thursday at 6:00 PM at Fort Pierce Central, and don't forget, on May the 11th and the 12th, at 7:00, we have our River Edge Elementary Beauty and the Beast.
Dr. Mills, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Mr. Harold gave me a quote, and as you know, we've been fighting the privatization of public schools for quite a while. The legislature passed a bill that creates more of the conditions necessary to enable its consistent narrative that public education is failing. And we know public education is not failing, but you cannot privatize if they admit that things are going in a very positive way. So I think that's something we need to remember, that there is an agenda, and unfortunately, our teachers and our kids are on the bad end of that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, you can tell our board members are very passionate. Hopefully, we got a few weeks left of school. If you haven't, make sure you thank a teacher. We appreciate all those that are teaching and working with our children in many different facets. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we appreciate all the businesses that came out and supported, and all the PTOs and organizations that came out and supported our teachers. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you to the Reading Foundation, that we had that excellent reading day, but also to the law enforcement that had a safety festival right across the street in conjunction. We're very grateful for our safety, our first responders. In many ways, our community is coming together to reach and educate throughout all of St. Lucie County. At this moment, we do have a couple of scheduled speakers. These are scheduled speakers. I'm just going in the way that they've been presented on the schedule of the agenda of Section 24, and first is Joseph Dillard. Mr. Dillard, if you're here, thank you for coming and speaking. You have five minutes. My attorney on the right will tell you when your time is up.
It won't take that long, sir.
No, take all five.[1459.23][1459.23](Laughter)
But thank you for coming, Mr. Dillard.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Dillard III. I grew up in Tampa, Florida, and that's where I attended and graduated from high school. I came here for college. And moving here, I heard a lot of opinions about Westwood High School. I'm representing the speakers bureau under Dr. Mills and the reps, and the things that I heard about Westwood High School was that it's a school of violence and crime, it's a school of failures, and it's a school that you don't want your children to attend. What I learned during the tour from Mr. Lynch and Mr. Lazo, who are the principals at Westwood High School, was about the programs that Westwood offers that I haven't found in Tampa. Not that Tampa doesn't offer those programs, but I graduated in 2007, so I'm probably younger than most of you guys. But I didn't get the luxury of attending the pre-vet or pre-med, marine and oceanography, business, or the agricultural sciences programs that are offered. The programs are, they're raising the standards for what it is to be a normal high school student. And while we can face the opinions of critics who always stand to oppose what's going on within our education system, I would highly encourage you to take the time to take a tour around Westwood High School, and to see what's going on within the school for yourself, because in so doing, you'll be enlightened about the opportunities that these kids are getting, that will raise the standard of what it is to be a good nation, community, and also an individual. Once again, I'm not going to be long, so in closing, Westwood reminds me a lot about life. When the standards and academic expectations rise, so does the performance of each student. Westwood has raised the standards of what it is to be a normal high school student. The kids who take part in these programs are kids who understand the importance of personal initiative, work ethic, teamwork, imagination, and ambition. They know what they want. These are qualities that make for the growth of a great nation. As the district averages of, as the, excuse me, as the district averages of dropouts, retention rates, graduation rates, attendance approves, so does the quality of living of our future kids. Dropouts equals to a rise in crime and more souls in prison. So what can you do? Knowledge is power, and finances are necessary to properly train and equip our children's dreams. If you can visit Westwood, like I said before, go ahead and visit, and make an investment to ensure the success of our future. Ask yourself, "How can I help?" Everything counts, so God bless you all, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Our next speaker is Rebecca Williams. Ms. Williams, thank you for coming today, and again, you got five minutes, and if you would just state your name. It'll start whenever you're ready to go.
Thank you. Okay, I am ready.
Go ahead. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Williams. I am a 14-year veteran of the St. Lucie County School System, hold an MA in Educational Leadership, and I'm a two-time recipient of Florida's Best and Brightest Scholarship. Currently, I'm proud to serve as fourth-grade team leader at one of the most well-established and highly-ranked schools in the district, Morningside Elementary.[1692.88][1692.88](Applause) One of the focus areas of our district is safe and caring schools. Today, I'm advocating for safety and caring on behalf of our district's 40,000 students and 9,000 faculty and staff. Specifically, I'm going to address issues associated with septic pipe breaks, which result in leaks of hazardous gases such as hydrogen sulfide, also known as HS2. It is my opinion that all faculty and staff should be trained of the warning signs of HS2 exposure, and an emergency plan should be implemented in the event of such a catastrophe. And also, that district maintenance department might be reorganized to assure there are proper channels to follow up reports of hazardous issues, so there is assurance that repairs are completed with little to no risk of human error that may result in disastrous consequences. There has been some conflicting information circulated in regard to the septic pipe that leads directly into my portable classroom, which was recently mowed over, leaving it open and leaking gas. False or misleading public statements have been made by district personnel, including 1, no one was ever in harm's way; 2, the levels of HS2 emitted had no effect on the classroom; and 3, the problem was reported April 5th and fixed on April 6th. In my opinion, some district personnel have not acted with integrity and transparency with faculty and staff, and parents and guardians of students exposed to the gas leak, which could have affected every person on our campus. I also believe it was unethical that on Friday... I also believe it was unethical that on Friday, April 7th, all faculty and staff of MSE were ordered not to speak of the issue to anyone. Additionally, I believe it is only right that all current and future health costs which resulted from the negligence of the maintenance department should be covered by the district. In Mr. Marvin Sanders' own words, "His human error caused the prolonged leak to occur." We are all human, and we all err. However, it is inhumane to attempt to cover up the effects of our errors, especially when it involves the endangerment of children. The broken pipe was not first reported on April 5th, but initially in a work order placed on March 27th. However, it was never fixed, and many people were exposed to toxic gas from around March 20th through April 6th. Around March 20th, people in or near my portable became increasingly ill. Through a chain of what I consider miraculous events, I discovered we were being poisoned by HS2 and was shocked and frightened when I read that my symptoms were in line with prolonged exposure to levels of 20 to 100 ppm or PPM. Above 100 ppm, death may occur in 48 hours. At 700 ppm, death occurs after one to two breaths. It was then I who reported the leak on April 5th by informing my vice principal. The leak was not treated as an emergency situation. Let me stress that I repeatedly, from the moment I realized the danger, urged my supervisors to be transparent with faculty, staff, and parents and guardians of our beloved students. I never intended that this incident would lead to this point with me addressing the board. However, I feel it is my last option to get the correct information conveyed to all of those who may have been in harm's way. On April 8th, I ended up in the emergency room, where I received care for symptoms of toxic gas exposure. The crisis of conscience I suffered as I was receiving care at the hospital while imagining some of my nine and 10-year-olds suffering at home with parents unaware of what they had been exposed to was excruciating. I have been diagnosed by a pulmonologist, neurologist, and doctor of osteopathic medicine with multiple symptoms caused by prolonged inhalation of toxic gas. Some of my initial acute symptoms have subsided upon removal from the exposure. However, I am left with a chronic condition requiring multiple medications. On April 28th, Aaron Clemmons of Human Resources stated that "Any illness I am currently experiencing has definitively not been caused from my work environment, but probably from my pets."
It's time.
From my pets that I have had for over 10 years. I have two paragraphs left. May I finish, please?
It's time. I appreciate you sharing. If you want, if you, if you'd like, you can go ahead and print it out and email it to the board, and we'll make sure that we read it.
I will. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am, I do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next is Mr. Robert Beach. He's not here. Mr. Robert Beach? Okay. At this moment, we're just going to take a short brief while I get my paperwork together, and then we're going to have three more unscheduled speakers.